Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the March 30th, 2016 meeting of the zoning board of adjustment. Lenny, would you lead in the pledge, please?
Absolutely. Please, drive. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under one law, universal, liberty, and justice for all.
And Rich, would you read the preamble, please?
Absolutely. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. For the benefit of those who have not attended these hearings, the procedure is as follows. The petitions will be heard in the order that they were posted in the legal notice. However, the chairman may change the order with consent of the board to expedite the public hearing as appropriate. The board will treat all petitioners, their representatives, butters, and other interested parties fairly and with respect. We allow each petitioner to state why his or her petition should be granted. Following the petitioner's statement, any butter or interested party is allowed to speak for or against the petition. In the interest of getting all the facts, we will go around a second time. The board may elicit testimony at any point, but we cannot allow any cross-discussions. All questions must be directed to the board. Also, we ask that you do not repeat yourself or your neighbor's testimony. If you wish to just indicate concurrence, please do so. After hearing all the facts regarding a petition, the chairman will close the public hearing, and the board will deliberate and vote on the petition before moving on to the next petition. You can expect fairness and impartiality by this board. The zoning board is empowered to legalize the breaking of the town zoning ordinance, and this is not done lightly. State law and local ordinances set out the criteria that must be met in order for the board to grant your petition. I remind you that it is your responsibility to prove your case so that the board has justification for granting the petition. The minimum requirements are listed in the form you received from the community development office, and it would be helpful if you proceed on this basis. Please turn off all cell phones and pagers, and with all those who are planning to testify, please stand to be sworn in.
If you plan on speaking tonight, you need to stand to be sworn in. Okay, raise your right hand. I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and not about the truth to help you God. Thank you very much.
And just as a reminder, the next ZBA meeting will be on April 27th, 2016, which again is a Wednesday. And our first petition has requested a continuance, and that's Bernstein, Schur, Sawyer, and Nelson, PA petitioner, and 427 DW Highway LLC have requested a continuance to the April 27th meeting of the ZBA. Could I have a motion for the acceptance of the continuance, please?
Motion to accept the continuance of Bernstein, Schur, Sawyer, and Nelson, PA petitioner, and 427 DW Highway LLC owner variance under section 3.02 to permit the creation of a third dwelling unit in an existing detached garage on a property within 15,200 square feet, whereas 120,000 square feet is required. The parcel is located at 427 Daniel Webster Highway in the C2 General Commercial Aquifer Conservation Elderly and Town Center Overlay Districts Tax Map 5D-4 Lot 076 Case Number 2016-011.
Second, please.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Five, zero, zero. All right, the next item is Bernstein, oh, I'm sorry, Fieldstone Land Consultants PLLC and College Bound Movers petitioners in Sam A. Tampose, Harold Watson, and Benjamin and Clegg Baskowski owners, a variance under section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a 4,800-square-foot building addition with a front setback of 39 feet, whereas 50 feet is required. The parcel is located at 14 Continental Boulevard in the I-1 Industrial and Aquifer Conservation Districts and Wellhead Protection Area, Tax Map 3C Lot 089, Case Number 2016-13. And please state your name and sign in, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair. For the record, my name is Chad Brannon.
It's going to be bright green. Push the button, the arrows there.
The light is on.
But it's going to be brighter than that. It is on?
Yep.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Chair. For the record, my name is Chad Brannon. I'm a civil engineer with Fieldstone Land Consultants, and I'll be representing College Bound Movers this evening. We are before you this evening seeking a variance under section 3.02 of the Meramec zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a 4,800-square-foot addition to the front of the existing building depicted on the plan as Unit 1. The applicant is also proposing to add a second story internally on Unit 1, so not changing any of the external components of the building. And this would consist of adding 22,400 square feet of building space, again internally, and converting it from warehouse to a climate-controlled self-storage facility. The proposed addition off the front of Unit 1, again, consists of 4,800 square feet. Of that 4,800 square feet, 1,000 square feet will be office space. The remainder of the space would be, again, climate-controlled self-storage. Our client has received administrative approval to utilize Unit 1 for a moving portable storage and truck rental company. This proposal would retain these uses and add climate-control self-storage to the site. Essentially, the master plan for the property pertaining to Unit 1 is for it to ultimately be 100% climate-controlled self-storage with a 1,000-square-foot office space, but there's going to be some transitioning of the businesses on-site as they will be relocated over time.
Before you go any further, could you read the points of law, I believe that you filled out on this?
Certainly.
If you'd stop after each one, if we have any questions, we'll ask them at that point, and that might save you a little bit of time and explanations.
Very good. Number one, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because granting this variance would allow for the productive use of the existing property. Zoning ordinance are, excuse me, zoning ordinances are generally written to manage the development in towns and to allow for reasonable and responsible development and expansion. Considering that the proposed addition will enhance the visual appearance from the street, will be consistent with that that currently exists in front of Unit 2, and will be consistent with the surrounding properties, we believe that this proposal is reasonable. It is our opinion that this project will substantially improve the aesthetics of the subject parcel and the surroundings. This will be a substantial investment in the area, excuse me, in this area of town that is reserved for this type of use, as the proposed use is conforming. Due to the above reasons, and the fact that this proposal will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood or threaten the health, safety, or general welfare of the public, we believe that this proposal would not be contrary to the public interest.
Are there any questions? All right, go ahead.
Number two, granting the variance would observe the spirit of the ordinance because this proposal, again, is consistent with its surroundings, is consistent with what currently exists on-site with Unit 2, and will substantially improve the aesthetics of the property from Continental Boulevard. We believe that the intent of this ordinance is to provide adequate separation and buffering to enhance the visual appearance from the adjacent street. Since the proposed addition will accomplish this, it will be consistent with, and be consistent with what currently exists in front of Unit 2 and the adjacent lots, we believe there should be some consideration given to the setback requirement. The proposed use is permitted in the zoning district, and the addition is consistent with the existing development on the subject property and in the vicinity of the subject property. The site plan demonstrates that there is adequate space on the subject property to support the development. Due to these, due to the above reasons, and the fact that this proposal will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood or threaten the health, safety, or general welfare of the public, we believe that this proposal would observe the spirit of the ordinance.
Anyone? Go ahead.
Number three, granting the variance would do substantial justice because granting this variance would allow a local business to grow and address an increasing demand. The applicant is looking to grow in this location as it is desirable considering the parcel's proximity to the highway. The proposal would result in no negative impacts to the neighborhood, as this property has always been occupied by a commercial or industrial use, which is consistent with its surroundings. This project will have no negative impact on local services, and we believe the investment on the property will increase the value and tax base for the town. Granting this variance would do substantial justice because it would allow for the productive use of the property as described while providing reasonable growth in the community.
Comments? Go ahead.
Number four, granting the variance would not diminish the values of surrounding properties because this proposal will consist of expanding the existing building on the subject property to contemplate a 4,800-square-foot addition for Unit 1. Unit 2 already has a 3,000-square-foot addition that encroaches into the front setback, so this proposal would simply provide each unit with usable office space and will provide more symmetry and curb appeal from Continental Boulevard. In our opinion, this proposal would improve the property and associated values, which ultimately means it will have a positive impact on the community. The construction of the addition and its associated use would be consistent with the surrounding uses and is permitted in the zoning district. It has also been our experience that new construction and development will oftentimes increase the value of surrounding properties. For all of these reasons, we would expect this project to have positive impacts on surrounding property values, as it will rejuvenate the site and the surroundings.
Questions? All right.
Number five, unnecessary hardship owing to the special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, denial of this variance would result in unnecessary hardship because, number one, no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property because, section 3.02 of the Meramec zoning ordinance requires that a 50-foot front yard setback be provided. We believe that the intent of this ordinance is to provide adequate separation and buffering to enhance the visual appearance from the adjacent street. Since the proposed addition will enhance the visual appearance from the street, we believe there should be some consideration given to the setback requirement. The proposed addition has been situated to be consistent with what currently exists on-site and will offer visual symmetry from Continental Boulevard. We do not believe that the proposed addition will have a negative impact on the general public. Based on the above, we do not believe that a fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property.
Any comments or questions?
So, I guess, not for nothing, but just looking at the plan, it doesn't look like it's going to be symmetrical to Unit 2 at all. It's going to be the full width of the unit.
The building will be similar in symmetrical in that it's going to be providing office space for both units and be in equivalent distance off of Continental Boulevard, meaning we're not, you know, looking to extend it any further to the roadway. We're simply looking to expand the building on-site in an area that is consistent with development that has occurred, both on-site and in the surrounding areas.
So the part that sticks out in front of the warehouse is going to be two stories instead of one story?
It will be two stories, but it's not going to be strictly concrete block from top to bottom. There's going to be glass facade along the second story as well as along the first story. So we think that'll offer a lot of improvements to what it currently exists on-site, which is really just a solid mass of concrete block for the full two stories.
And wider than the original, correct?
Excuse me?
The design, the new plan is wider than the original plan? Is it wider or longer?
It's...
It looks like it's wider.
It's longer. When we were before you back on February 24th, we got a variance to construct a 3,000-square-foot office space, exactly symmetrical to the adjacent unit, Unit 2. Ultimately, what happened is before we went before the planning board, my client started doing internal fit-ups of the building and realized that there was enough room in this particular structure to actually contemplate a second story. And so he felt that this site would be most appropriate for his climate-control business, and therefore, the master plan for this property is for it to be 100% occupied by climate-controlled self-storage. Therefore, ultimately, the MyBox and the College Bound Movers portion of the business will be relocated. He's currently looking at other sites in town for that, but that's the reason for the change, is we were getting ready to submit to the planning board, and he had a different vision for the property at that point and felt that this would be the best proposal. And the part of the reason for the addition getting bigger is generally, I guess, in the industry, you have to hit a certain square footage of 40,000 square feet in order for it to be a successful business model. We're currently at, I think around, I think it's 56,000 square feet, but when you take out the hallway space, we're just barely meeting those thresholds. So that's the reason for going two stories, just to kind of give you some background in why this proposal has come to be.
So what else is my next question is like, we approved the, we approved it the first time, and so seeing, and now that he decided that he wanted to add more to it. So if this goes through tonight, are we going to be seeing you back here in April or May looking for, I mean, you see what I'm saying, it's like, you know, we approved it once. I understand where he's coming from, but I mean, it seems like he's changing his mind.
Well, he has a number of businesses...
Because this is the first time, because he looked at another property. I mean, we seen him in here, you know, a couple times already, because he was looking at putting this space further down, and then looked at it again, and then so just kind of, I mean, if we're going to go through, if this goes through, I mean, is this the final plan, or are we going to see you back here again in April, May? And I'm just kind of curious.
Yeah, this is, this is the final plan for this property that we're aware of. Unit 2 will still be occupied by the construction company. They have an active lease on the, on the building. So there is no plans that I'm aware of to change, any further changes for, certainly for Unit 1. This is the master plan development. And again, this change was spurred specifically by measurements when he started to do the fit-up for the unit. It was determined that the ceiling height of this particular building is high enough to accommodate a second floor, and ultimately, through that process, he found that this, this would be the best site for his climate-control business.
So this is a new business altogether?
He has, he has other climate-control businesses in the state, but this is a new business in this area, certainly.
In Merrimack?
In Merrimack, it'll be his first one.
So all those boxes in the back of the building is going to be gone, then?
Eventually, those will be gone. Yep. Once, once the site is, is fit up for the climate-control self-storage, it'll be gone. He currently has an approval for the MyBox use on the site. So the MyBox portable storage is allowed to be stored in a parking space on-site or inside the building, currently.
Now, are all those boxes full, or are they empty?
I suspect that some may be full and some may be empty. I can't say for sure.
So what you're saying is every, if they are full or they have anything in them, they're going to be going into climate control once it's done, into the climate control area?
What I'm saying is that the...
And the boxes are going to disappear?
Yeah, the long-term plan for this particular property is that the MyBox company will not be occupying the site. So the MyBox is going away completely. The climate-control self-storage is not necessarily associated with the MyBox. It's a completely different business. Certainly, if they put the MyBoxes inside the existing warehouse building, then it would be climate control, but that's not the long-term goal for this property. So those would be, hopefully, we would be before, you know, this board if he finds another property in town for his MyBox business specifically. Ideally, for that business, I guess, I mean, just to share, because I know he's actively looking for properties, ideally, it would be a three-story building so that he could stack the MyBoxes, I believe, three-high, and therefore, it would be less of a footprint. It's really hard to retrofit a building for that use, as you can imagine, you know, whether it's columns internally, it takes a lot of space to maneuver, you know, for trucks and the MyBox delivery truck. So that may also have been part of the reason why he's decided to, you know, to change the master proposal for this, this particular site.
Okay, and part two of five?
The proposed use is a reasonable one because, for the reasons previously stated, we believe that this proposal meets the spirit and intent of the ordinance. The proposed, the proposed development will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood or threaten the health, safety, or general welfare of the public. It is our opinion that the project will rejuvenate an existing building in town, which we believe will substantially improve the aesthetics of the subject parcel as well as the surroundings. The use proposed for this property is permitted in the underlying zoning and will be consistent with the surroundings. The site plan demonstrates that there is adequate space on the subject properties to support this redevelopment. Since the proposal will improve the neighborhood, be consistent with the surroundings, and result in no negative impacts to the public, we believe that this proposed use is reasonable.
All right, do you want him to read part B, or you feel that he's filled, answered everything with his previous, was thought on that? Okay, you don't have to read part B. So do you have anything else that you'd like to show us or speak about, or?
Sure. With the previous proposal, we did have an opportunity to go before pretty much all of the boards, and we had met with the community development office, and there was a lot of feed, there was feedback that we received from Department of Public Works as well. And we have incorporated all of those comments in with this redesign, primarily pertaining to some restrictions to pesticides and so on from the Conservation Commission usage, also some landscaping along Continental Boulevard, as well as proposing an infiltration in Leaching Basin area along the front of the building that will also be landscaped. And so all of those elements have been incorporated in this design, and I didn't know if they were concerns of this board before, but I just wanted to share that with you this evening. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions relative to those parts.
So, just so I understand, there, what you're saying is that there was, you received feedback that was then used to implement the new design, basically?
We received feedback that we incorporated in, in with the redesign, so that we hopefully addressed everybody's comments with the submission of the plans to, to the associated boards.
All right, thank you.
Any further questions from the board? Go ahead, Lenny.
Do you know the width of the right-of-way from Continental Boulevard today? I can't do anything by scale.
I could scale it, but it may be shown as approximate on our plan. I can't say for sure whether we verified what the width was, but I'd be happy to...
Jump planes are better than hours to scale one. I'll take your word for it.
It's shown as 60 feet on the plan.
60?
Yep.
The point being that when Continental Boulevard was built, on a 50-foot right-of-way, it was a two-lane road. Later, was widened to a four-lane road. If it was still a two-lane road, they probably wouldn't even be here today, because they'd already have the setback.
Right.
But they widened the road, which was the logical thing to do, and that's why all the catch basins and the manholes and stuff aren't where they should be. You drive over them instead of having them where they should have been. But that's part of, part of the scenario, that the road is wider than it originally was.
Thank you.
All right, if the board has no further, I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to testify for this variance? Anyone who'd like to testify against it? Close the public hearing? And any final words from the board? Tony?
No.
Eric? Rich? Well, then I'll call for a motion, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Fieldstone Land Consultants PLLC and College Bound Movers petitioners and Sam A. Tampose, Harold Watson, and Benjamin and Clegg Baskowski owners, variance under section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a 4,800-square-foot building addition with a front setback of 39 feet, whereas 50 feet is required. The parcel is located at 14 Continental Boulevard, Boulevard in the I-1 Industrial and Aquifer Conservation Districts and Wellhead Protection Area, Tax Map 3C Lot 089, Case Number 2016-013. Hold on a second. Staff recommends, should the board vote to grant the variance, that it be granted with the following conditions: The petitioner shall obtain site plan approval for the proposed project from the planning board. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Five, zero, zero.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, Lenny's voting. He's sitting in for Lynn. The next item on the agenda is David Sanderson, petitioner-owner, requesting a variance under section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit a multifamily dwelling in the R2 Residential District. The parcel is located at 81 Severance Bridge Road in the R2 Residential District, Tax Map 3A Lot 029, Case Number 2016-014.
Seat and sign in, please. Good evening.
Any name, sir? All right, if you would first...
Did you turn the green lights on?
If you would read your five points of law there, and then we'll get into the rest of it.
Number one, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because I am only proposing to change the use of an existing garage to my personal residence. The footprint is not going to be changing.
Questions?
Sorry, just going to throw a little clarification. You say footprint, what's not changing?
The footprint of the detached four-car garage.
It's, okay, that's, sorry.
It's existing structure.
Okay, thank you.
All right, number two?
Number two, the spirit of the ordinance is observed... Number two, the spirit of the ordinance is observed because the health, safety, convenience, and welfare of the town would not be in jeopardy by changing the use of the existing structure.
Go ahead.
Number three, granting the variance would do substantial justice because it would help me relocate my home to the proposed location. I believe that I would be using the new residence in a safe and reasonable way. Denying the variance greatly exceeds any public gain which warrants the application.
Now, is this house now that you're going to move out of, correct? Into the garage area, you said?
No, I live two miles from this location. I own the existing duplex. There's a duplex on the property.
Okay.
Right now, I own that, and...
So you want to switch that to a three-family?
Well, it's a side-by-side duplex with a detached four-car garage.
And the detached four-car garage is what you're going to convert into your own personal residence?
Right.
All right, this is, that's what I was asking.
That's rude clarification.
All right, and number four?
Number four, for the following reasons, the values of the surrounding properties will not be diminished, because the requested variance would not detract from the character of the property, because the current garage looks like a ranch-style house already and wouldn't be changing. The property is well-kept, and in the future, will remain that way.
Questions? Go ahead with number five.
Unnecessary hardship, number five. A, owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship because, number one, no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of the provision to the property, because denying this variance would cause unnecessary hardship, because I am trying to stay near my children. Due to a future divorce from my current wife, I must relocate my place of residence. This location is only two miles from my ex-wife and two children, seven and ten years old. This would financially benefit my children and me greatly. And, two, the proposed use is a reasonable one, because the structure is already built, and I don't intend to alter the current footprint. This would not impact the abutters at all.
No.
Any questions?
I am... Just a moment, please, excuse me. I'm a little confused. I have a memory here saying that, where do you live?
Thirteenth Taconic Drive, Amherst, South Eagle Woods.
I got a memory here saying that eighty-one is not the address.
Yeah, it's eighty-one A and B, Severance Bridge Road, Merrimack.
It's not your address.
I own it, but I live at Taconic Drive.
Wrong, I'm sorry, go ahead. I didn't hear what you said, I'm sorry.
I own eighty-one A and B, Severance Bridge Road, Merrimack.
Okay.
I rent the current duplex out to tenants right now, and the four-car detached garage I want to use for my future residence.
Oh, okay.
Which is near my kids.
All right.
I'm still living at my prior address.
Okay.
Do you understand that, Tony?
No, but that's okay.
I currently live with my wife, soon-to-be ex-wife, at thirteen Taconic Drive, Amherst, which is on South Eagle Woods. And I intend to move to this location that I already own.
Okay.
I've owned it for fifteen, seventeen years, about now.
All right, okay, thank you.
Any further questions from the board? I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone who'd like to testify for this variance? Anyone who'd like to testify against it? And I'm going to read a letter that we've received at Community Development. This is from Kenneth and Linda Taylor of eighty-one Severance Bridge Road in Amherst. As abutters to Mr. Sanderson's property, we wish to address a concern with the zoning variance hearing regarding his plan to erect a building on a reference property. We live at eighty-one Severance Bridge Road in Amherst, as opposed to Merrimack. This has been a source of much confusion over the past thirty years. Principally, we want assurance that any contractors employed by Mr. Sanderson are made fully and completely aware of our property is located on Severance Bridge Road at number eighty-one, and not to be confused with the property owned by Mr. Sanderson, which is located down a spur off Severance Bridge Road and in the town of Merrimack, not Amherst. As long as our property is not misidentified nor violated, we have no objections to the proposed project. But I understood you not to be really building anything, but probably just renovating the garage, is that correct?
Exactly, yes.
So basically, they don't want anybody showing up and tearing up their bathroom.
That won't happen.
Okay, if no one wants to testify, then I'm going to close the public hearing. And could I have a motion, please?
Well, since I started all this. I make a motion to vary on section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit a multifamily dwelling in a R2 residential district. The parcel is located at eighty-one Severance Bridge Road in the R2 Residential District, tax map three A, lot zero two nine, case two oh one six dash oh one four.
All in favor, say aye.
That we have the staff recommendations.
Oh, I'm sorry, staff recommendations.
Oh, yeah. Thank you, Richard.
Anytime.
The petitioner shall obtain a site plan approval from the planning board for the purpose of multifamily dwelling.
This is a motion to approve, right?
And with the motion?
Yeah, with the motion.
There's a motion to approve?
Yes.
Second?
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Eight, four?
Four, one, zero.
No, four, zero, one.
Four, zero, one.
Upstain?
Upstain always goes last.
Motion's passed.
Thank you for your time.
You do have thirty days in which somebody can come back and appeal the motion, so if you do anything, any work in that time, it is at your own risk, so...
Okay. Thank you very much, Hita.
Thank you, good night.
Okay, the next item is Richard Elliott, petitioner, and Toby and Lori Russell owners, requesting a special exception under section two point oh two point one B two of the zoning ordinance to permit an accessory dwelling unit, an ADU. The parcel is located at twenty-five Scott Drive in the R2 Residential District and Wellhead Protection Area, tax map three C, lot zero nine four dash one zero, case number twenty, two thousand sixteen dash fifteen. And, your name, sir?
My name's Rick Elliott, I'm the petitioner for Toby and Lori Russell, I'm sorry, and they're asking, or we're asking, for a special exemption under section two oh two point one B two of the zoning ordinance to permit an accessory dwelling unit. The parcel is located at twenty-five Scott Drive in a residential two district, Wellhead Protection, tax map three C, lot zero nine four dash ten, case number two thousand sixteen dash fifteen.
All right, and could you start off with the points of law, please?
I will.
We'll take it from there, how's that?
Thank you. The specific site is an appropriate location for the use, or uses, in terms of overall community development, because the ADU will provide a family-oriented environment and solve a problem for caring for an elderly parent as their needs increase in the future.
All right, go ahead.
Two, the use is developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood and shall produce no diminution of real estate values in the neighboring area, because the space is developed will be an internal space in a lower walkout basement. There are no external changes to the home.
All right, number three, please?
Number three, there are no nuisance or serious hazards to vehicle or pedestrians, because the home is currently occupied by the same three adults that will live there if the ADU request is granted. The only change is an increase in the comfort and convenience for the family living in the home.
Go ahead.
Number four, that adequate parking area is provided for motor vehicles on the premises, because the home currently has a three-car garage and off-site parking for at least another ten visitors. There are no changes to the property required to maintain adequate parking.
That is a big house and a big, it's almost like a parking lot there, yeah.
Yes, it is. It's a long way back from the house, and it's a big lot.
And number five?
Number five, the ADU is contained within, or will be in addition to an existing or proposed single-family detached dwelling. The ADU will be contained inside a walkout basement of an existing home. It will be, it will be attached to the home by a common staircase, and will have its own egress through an exterior door.
All right.
Number six, the ADU contains no more than one bedroom. It contains one bedroom.
Go ahead.
Number seven, the ADU does not exceed a thousand square feet, or fifty percent of the area heated living space within the principal dwelling unit. The ADU is approximately six hundred and sixty-five square feet, which is under twenty-five percent of the existing home's heated space. Number eight, the ADU is connected internally to the principal dwelling unit by a common staircase. Number nine, the ADU occupancy is to be restricted to a family member only, with the term "family" defined as individuals related by blood, marriage, or adoption, to the fee simple owner occupants of the principal dwelling unit. The occupant is the, is the mother of the owner.
And number ten?
Number ten, the ADU is designed to remain functionally dependent on the principal dwelling unit, and will not have separate provisions for separate utilities, garages, driveways, yards, or similar amenities. All of the utilities and services are supplied by the principal unit. There will continue to be only one meter for all of the services.
Any questions from the board? Comments? All right, seeing none, I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to testify for or against this item? Close the public hearing? And again, any comments from the board?
Motion to approve, Richard Elliott, petitioner, and Toby and Lori Russell owners, special exception under section two point zero two point one B two of the zoning ordinance to permit an ADU, accessory dwelling unit, ADU. The parcel is located at twenty-five Scott Drive in the R2 Residential District and Wellhead Protection Area, tax map three C, lot zero nine four dash one zero, case number two thousand sixteen dash zero fifteen. Board recommendations are as follows: Should this be approved, an execution of declaration of covenants for the accessory dwelling unit, which will be provided by staff, and then payment of the Hillsborough County Register of Deeds recording fee for recording the declaration of covenants for the accessory dwelling unit.
Second?
Second. Third?
That's better.
Okay, second by Tony. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Have a good evening.
Steve, who's going to testify over there? Do you, they're going to be sw...
Oh, so everybody stand, raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
All right, well, you're setting up, I'll read your petition here. O.M. Shanty O.M. Realty Management LLC, petitioner-owner, requesting a variance under section three point zero two, note six of the zoning ordinance to permit the replacement of a gasoline station canopy with a setback from the Daniel Webster Highway of thirty feet, whereas fifty feet is required. The parcel is located at three ninety-two Daniel Webster Highway in the C two General Commercial and Aquafire Conservation Districts, tax map four D dash three, lot zero three one, case number two thousand sixteen dash sixteen.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the board. For the record, I'm Steve Keach from Keach Nordstrom Associates, project engineer, Bedford, New Hampshire. With me tonight are the four owners of O.M. Shanty O.M. Realty Management LLC, who purchased the property situated at three ninety-two DW Highway last August. The property in question, a lot of you will remember, as the Friendly Bear Gas Station Convenience Store, and has been through a couple of other ownerships prior to my client's acquisition on August twenty-fourth last year. At the time, my clients purchased the property, they were aware that the DES requirements were effectively going to cause them the need to close as of the first of the year, because the equipment, the tanks, dispensers, and the other apparatus that were there part of the fuel delivery was out of code, and as of the first of the year, vendors would not be permitted to put fuel in there to sell on a retail basis. So the planned closure of the store was, the closure of the store was a planned event. Right after the first of the year, they had the existing tanks and dispensers removed. And what brings us here tonight is a variance request, so when we put back the new equipment, it'll go from four pumps, two pumps, to four. The canopy that has been there since nineteen eighty-four has dimensions of twenty-two by forty-eight, the twenty-two in the north-south direction, and forty-eight in the east-west direction. The southeast corner of that canopy is currently situated as close as twenty-nine feet to the westerly line of Daniel Webster Highway. Fifty feet is required by virtue of footnote six to section three point oh two of the zoning ordinance. The variance request would be to not exacerbate that encroachment, actually, diminish it by a foot, thirty feet is the request, but the length of the canopy will multiply by two to accommodate the two extra pumps, as you see on the diagram that was attached, the plan that was attached. I have a copy of it here, and what we're essentially doing is doubling the length of the canopy in the north-south direction. Confirmed with Jillian, that I believe the variance was going to be needed to that, and she was able to confirm that for me after I met with my client. Pretty much everything else on site will remain the same, except that we'll get a major facelift. And obviously, we're dealing with a thirty-two-year-old building here. My clients own and operate other similar facilities, a lot of which have been rehabilitation-type projects, and seated to my left is one of my clients, his name is Deepak Baggett. name is Deepak Bagat, D-I-P-A-K-B-A-B-H-A-G-A-T, for those taking minutes. You want to add anything at this point?
So far.
Okay. So basically, we are, the proposal is to expand the length in the north-south direction of the canopy from 22 to 44 feet. Again, while the distance from DW Highway will actually diminish a foot, its length or area within the front yard will effectively double. Hence, that's the reason for the variance request. Attached to your packet is a written summary of the variance criteria that we have prepared. I'll go through that, and if there's any questions, I'll stop at the end of each one to allow the chair to direct. I see you've taught me well, Fran, over the years, right?
I'm trying.
Granting the variance will not be contrary to the public interest. Section 2.02.3 of the zoning ordinance, which is presumed to have been adopted with the public interest in mind, define the purpose of the C2 Commercial District within which the subject property is situated as follows. Quote, "In recognition of the demand created by Merrimack's strategic location and continuum in growth, commercial areas are hereby designated allowing for the establishment of retail businesses," end quote. In the current instance, the requested variance is intended to facilitate modernization of a 32-year-old commercial facility, which not only needs owner investment to comply with applicable code requirements, but also to remain competitive and viable under current economic conditions. The planned reinvestment facilitates both that outcome as well as replaces previously existing storage tanks and equipment with that which is both modern and code compliant for protection of the environment, all of which is clearly in the public interest.
Off topic, but what name-brand gas is going to be sold, or, I'm just curious?
It's going to be unbranded.
Unbranded?
Yeah, it'll be unbranded. It's currently called New World Gas, and pretty much it might stay the same name for now unless we, as we go, and if we, we talk to a few distributors right now, and if they're interested, that might be unbranded. But as of now, it's going to be unbranded.
Okay, thank you.
Me.
You got a question?
I got a question.
Go ahead.
What is the height of this?
The canopy?
The canopy.
It'll be, I don't know, Tony, what the existing canopy is, but it'll roughly match it. I believe it's approximately 14 feet to 15 feet. That's typical dimension.
Sorry, Lenny, go ahead.
Somebody ought to proofread these things. You're not buying the property until August 24th.
No, they purchased 24, 2015.
I didn't print it.
Ah, that was my mistake, Leonard.
Will, will the storage tanks need any kind of action, or are they going to be within setbacks?
They're not required to be in setbacks. Basically, the new tanks have already been permitted by the DES, the double-line tanks. There's an annulus between the tanks with leak detection, which is what the current code is. But they'll basically be put back essentially in the same location as the other ones, near the southerly line. They're not deemed a structure because they're subterranean.
Correct.
Am I correct with that, Jill?
Yes.
Okay. Forgot I had the zoning administrator here. Would you like me to continue?
Please.
Okay. The spirit of the ordinance will be observed. Section 1.01 of the ordinance describes the intent and hence the spirit of the zoning ordinance through the following statement. Quote, "To promote the health, safety, convenience, and general welfare of the town of Merrimack and make it an attractive place to live," end quote. In the current instance, the underlying reason for switching out storage tanks, dispensing equipment in the canopy structure at this time is environmental code compliance, which clearly serves to promote the health, safety, convenience, and general welfare of the public. In making the decision to purchase and reinvest in both the subject property and the modern equipment necessary to continue and establish use, the current owners have assumed financial risk. In order to offset that risk, the owners need to improve the function and appearance of the facility to both attract and conveniently serve local customers. Taken together, enhanced environmental protection, and improved aesthetics to be realized upon completion of the planned undertaking appear to comport well with the stated purposes of the ordinance.
Questions? Go ahead, Steve.
Third point is granting of the variance will do substantial justice. Substantial justice will be achieved upon approval of this application, as that approval will facilitate code-compliant modernization of a 32-year-old facility and allow the same to remain economically viable over the long term.
Think around a sec, go ahead.
Okay. Four, the values of surrounding properties will not be diminished. For all intents and purposes, the use of the subject premises was established 32 years ago. At present, what is left is an aged commercial facility in need of modernization. The extent of modernization required will come at significant cost to the owners and investment they are willing to make based on anticipation of success with their business. Success realized upon wise investment in one's business will, within a given area, often encourages others to do the same and can have the effect of revitalizing other properties in the district so as to maintain, if not enhance, nearby commercial property values. In the current instance, the true risk to surrounding property values is not the planned facility improvements, but rather the effect a closed gas service station could have on those same properties if the property remained shuttered and fall further into disrepair.
Go ahead.
Would you like me to continue?
Yep.
The fifth and final test is the unnecessary hardship. I've responded to both, A and B. A is owing to a special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. Denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship because, one, no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property in question. The response to that is that in the current instance, the owner seeks a variance to erect a modern canopy situated 30 feet from the westerly line of DW Highway, whereas the canopy structure that is intended to replace is located as close as 29 feet to the same line. A special condition in the form of an approved gasoline, gasoline station use at this location was created in 1984, at the time the facility was constructed. Unlike many other businesses, the sale of petroleum products and the condition of equipment incidental to the same is not protected by grandfathering in a traditional sense. Rather, changes in code instituted for the benefit of public good have necessitated the proposed modernization. Simply stated, absent a variance from one code, the owner will not be afforded the opportunity to achieve compliance with a second code requirement that is currently preventing continued operation of the facility for a previously approved use. The second part of that is the use is a reasonable one. The response to that is that the use will not change. The only outcome will be modernization of equipment needed to properly conduct that use. Further, the extent of front yard encroachment, which is the topic of this variance request, will not be exacerbated under this proposal. I also responded to option B of the...
You don't have to, but we're going to save you from that.
All right. Save you from listening to me.
Right.
Okay, I got it.
You got it, right.
I don't mind listening to you, Steve, I just...
All right. Now I feel better, Tony.
I thought you would.
Any questions?
When is the construction going to start?
Well, we have to go to, assuming that we, I have, it's the second time I've been asked that question. Assuming success this evening, my office will go out and do a little bit of tightening up of some survey existing conditions, prepare a site plan, because this is going to need to go to the planning board because it's effectively amending a site plan. We hope to be able to submit to Jill's department in the middle of the month and to hit one of the planning board dates, either May 3rd or 17th. Deepak ordered the tanks when?
Three weeks ago.
Three weeks ago, and those have a delivery time of eight to 10 weeks, so they will be arriving here around mid-May. If we assume the latest of the two dates for planning board appearance in May of 17th, that's a pretty simple site plan. There's always administrative conditions, technical conditions, figure a couple of weeks. As I reported to you earlier this evening, they've already received their DES permit to put the tanks in the ground. By switching from two pumps to four, there's an amendment that that's going to be necessary that will take a couple of weeks. An amendment that won't be filed until the site plan is, after it's filed with Jillian, so we're not changing it twice. We're kind of targeted somewhere around the first of June to commence construction. And then the construction, you figure it's eight to 10?
No, five to six weeks.
Five to six weeks. I'm going to, again, assuming success tonight, and after we file the site plan application with the planning board, I'm going to introduce my clients to Rick Jones. Hopefully, he'll allow them to do some selective demolition and interior work within the building since it really, they're not going to be knocking down buildings or doing additions or anything of that nature.
Well, that's what I was going to ask you. You don't foresee any major changes where you're going to have to come back before...
No, because really, the canopy's the only thing new, Fran. I mean, on the plan that you saw, that building was constructed with a drive-through that hadn't, hasn't been used in like 25 years. Some of you may remember it actually being, and it never really worked because the, it was several reasons, though. Way the cars would come around the building, it was too sharp, and you'd always come to the window, which didn't project out, and the window was about six to eight inches too high. And it's not a foregone conclusion that they're going to reestablish that use that was a part of the original site plan, but because of the fact that if they were to, it could influence the placement of the new canopy and fueling equipment. So you'll see on the drawings, it says potential future, you know?
Well, that's what I...
Kind of like the thing that we permitted for Jack Nasser's station up at the north end that never, never got built because Dunkin's wouldn't allow a Dunkin's too close to the new one in Litchfield, right? And, but, so that remains to be seen. Any update on that, Deepak?
No, it's still, it's the same. I mean, we might just keep it closed, use that as a storage area for now, but the floor space is big enough for convenience storage right now, so.
If you remember that for, as a gas station with a convenience store, that was a fairly ample space inside. It's over 2,000 feet. And, you know, one time, you go back 25 years, it was a pretty decent business there.
Yeah, it was, it was busy there.
And, you know, part of the issue, I think, has been management, the second and tertiary owners, managers of the property. And the other is, I think, a lot of it is, is just more, more choices up and down DW Highway. And I don't imagine $3.80 a gas, gallon gas helped their business either for a number of years. And, but what part of our client's proposal here to do is they're going to, because they're going to close the station, they're going to clean up the inside and probably do just a little bit more than paint, right?
Yeah.
Well, we got a nice one on the north end that's been sitting closed for years. You might want to think about that one, too.
If this goes well, we might.
So that, to conclude, if there's any questions, the board would like to direct to myself or my clients. We're here, and we're all sworn in.
No, no, going right into the public hearing. How's that?
Thank you.
Open the public hearing for anyone who wants to testify for or against this variance. Okay, close the public hearing. Did I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve O.M. Shanti O.M. Realty Management LLC petitioner-owner variance under section 3.02. Note 6 of the zoning ordinance to permit the replacement of a gasoline station canopy with a setback from Daniel Webster Highway of 30 feet whereas 50 feet is required. The parcel is located at 392 Daniel Webster Highway in the C2 General Commercial and Aquifer Conservation Districts, tax map 4D-3, lot 031, case number 2016-16. With staff recommendations, if this is approved, that the petitioner shall obtain site plan approval from the planning board for the proposed canopy and other site improvements as referenced on the project plan.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We'll get out of here.
Have a good night, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And good luck with your gas station. Think about the one in the north end. It's closer to me.
Madam Chair, I'm going to recuse myself for the next case.
Okay, thank you, Rich. Thanks a lot, Justin. We're going to have, there. Next item is Ginny, is it Lutz?
Yes.
Ginny Lutz?
Lutz.
Lutz? Sorry. Petitioner and FMR Merrimack Realty Trust FID owner requesting a variance under section 17.093 to allow an illuminated sign of up to 70 square feet in a residential zone whereas a non-illuminated sign, up to six square feet in a residential zone are required or allowed. The parcel is located at 1 Spartan Way in the R1 Residential, I2 Industrial, and Aquifer Conservation Districts in Wellhead Protection Area, tax map 3C, lot 191, case number 2016-17.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. For the record, my name is Gordon Leedy. I'm a landscape architect and planner with VHB for the applicant. If I may, I have a couple of slides to show you that will kind of explain what the existing situation is. I know you're probably all very familiar with the Fidelity campus. With me this evening are Ginny Lutz from Fidelity. She's a senior director and the, and the director of the campus in Merrimack. And also Charlie Shalial, who is with SES, they're a signage and branding company working with Fidelity on this program.
But before you get into...
Yep.
Could you read the points of law that were typed up here?
I...
Granting the variance, and that might save some time, and then we can go right into the presentation.
Okay, that's fine. We are seeking a variance from section, section 17093, regulating signs in residential zones, seeking to permit an externally illuminated sign of up to 70 square feet in area. Granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because the signage that's proposed in this application is not contrary to the public interest. The sign identification elements that are proposed will not only clearly identify the Fidelity Investments campus to the public, but it will also seek those, assist those seeking this location, the ability to utilize these elements as a wayfinding tool in locating their destination. Campus identification sign is being specifically designed to complement the landscape and the character of the, of the area. The elements will be integrated into the existing landscape and utilize existing open space in order to achieve property identification. Those traveling to or through this area expect and desire the use of identification tools to assess and property identification and vehicular navigation. The elements proposed as submitted will accommodate the needs for the property as well as protect the interests of the public.
Everyone else set? All right, go ahead with number two.
Number two, the spirit of the ordinance is observed because, as stated in the Merrimack zoning ordinance, section 17, the purpose is to encourage the effective use of signage to direct movement, advertise, and inform the public while protecting public safety, preserving neighborhood character, and minimizing visual clutter. The relief that is respectfully sought as a part of this application will not be in conflict with the spirit of the ordinance. The intent of the campus identification or gateway sign is to identify this 554-acre campus in a manner that will allow for clear and concise messaging to the motoring public. is to identify this 554 acre campus in a manner that will allow for clear and concise messaging to the motoring public. This clear and concise messaging in turn allows for safe vehicular movement through the corridor. The elements that are requested will not be visible from any other residentially zoned property and will be consistent with the method in which other large land developments, the premium outlets, Atrium Medical and others, have been allowed to identify their property in the immediate neighborhood of Fidelity's campus. In addition, Fidelity Investments has approximately 5,500 employees working at this campus, has roughly 1.2 million square feet of usable space, all of which is housed on the 554 acre property. Fidelity Investments has occupied this property since 1996, and there had previously been a strategy to keep the premise unbranded and void of notification to the public and the community. This mindset is shifting, and the gateway element that is proposed to be located at the entrance to the campus off Industrial Drive will be a demonstration of that new philosophy. This request will not contribute to visual clutter as the element proposed along Industrial Drive will be the only branded element along the entire frontage of the property.
Any questions? And I'm sorry, I do apologize. I forgot to mention you only have, we only have four board members, because Rich does work for Fidelity.
I understand that.
So if it's a two to two tie, then it's definitely.
We'll, we'll come back.
You'll come back. All right, gotcha. But go ahead, please.
Three, granting the variance will do substantial justice because substantial justice will be achieved if the variance is approved. Fidelity Investments, Investments is not seeking relief that is out of character for the corridor, inconsistent with the type of use that's present on the property, or out of scale with the overall frontage along Industrial Drive. If this property were zoned as commercial or industrial, per the Town of Merrimack zoning ordinance, Fidelity Investments would be allowed the square footage and the type of illumination for signage that's reflected in this variance request. Due to the residential zoning classification of Fidelity Investments' frontage along Industrial Drive, this application is necessary. The application represents this property owner's desire to identify their location within the community in a manner that is in line with the purpose of the ordinance.
All right, go ahead.
Number four, for the following reasons, the values of the surrounding properties will not be diminished. There will be no impact on the values of any surrounding properties. Due to the size of this campus, the main element promoted, proposed along Industrial Drive will be centered along the overall Industrial Drive frontage. The proposed gateway signage will only be directly visible to motors traveling along this roadway and the very few properties on the north side of this frontage. Surrounding properties are predominantly located within industrial districts, and the proposed signage will have no impact on their value. Due to the size of this property and the natural vegetation that's present, properties along Continental Boulevard to the west of the Fidelity's investment campus will not have a line of sight to this gateway element.
Though I do have to tell you, when we went down and looked at it today, it looked just like a college campus with everybody walking around in and out and.
Yep.
You really, you know, it's like, really had to take it slow because you, you had walkers all over. If they weren't going in and out of the building, it looked like they were on their own time, walking around.
There's an extensive trail network. And people take advantage of it. It's actually a beautiful piece of property.
It, it looked very, very nice, yeah. But not to interrupt you, I just wanted to.
And then unnecessary hardship. Owing to the special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other, other properties in the area, denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship because no fair and substantial relationship exists between general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property because the application of the ordinance to this property does not allow for proper identification that's representative of the, of the type of use that's present or the, nor the scale of the existing development. Because virtually all the public right-of-way frontage of the Fidelity property remains in the residential district. Only a six-square-foot non-illuminated sign is allowed for the site along, over its 1.5 miles of frontage on Industrial Drive and Continental Boulevard. A sign of that size placed along this frontage would be dramatically out of scale and would do a disservice not only to the property owner, as this sign would not be a viable identification tool, but also to those traveling on the busy roadway system, trying to utilize the message on that sign as a way, a source of wayfinding assistance. And the proposed use is a reasonable one because the overall use of the property will not be altered through the granting of this requested relief for gateway signage. It is reasonable to allow identification signage appropriate to one of the largest employers in the state at their flagship facility in New Hampshire. Currently, Fidelity Investments Campus is void of identification to the public. This was an intentional policy undertaken at the time Fidelity assumed ownership of the property. The only marker that's present at this time is a single flagpole that displays the American flag set behind a, a small stone wall. Fidelity is now undertaking a refresh of its corporate identification and branding at all of its campus properties nationwide, and this proposal is consistent with the efforts undertaken at each of its other large properties. And I filled out B if you'd like me to go into that.
No, I think, I think you've covered everything there.
Just to give you a brief, I promise it will be brief, overview of how we wound, what the property is like and how we wound up where we are. On the board is a, is a map of the, of the 554 acres, and it currently is two, two distinct lots, one of which has the majority of the campus property on it. That's the lot in question, which is 3C 191, which basically forms a ring around the other lot, which is the two, the two Contra Way property. And that's because they were acquired at different times from, from what was then Digital Equipment Corporation. When this was built, Industrial Drive did not exist, and I don't think the Continental Boulevard existed. It was Camp Sergeant Road. They had an old slip ramp off of, that went directly onto the highway.
Digital put that in for their employees, so they wouldn't, wouldn't have to pay the toll. So they, they could, they could get onto the turnpike.
Yeah, you know, I think, well, I guess there was a toll booth at exit, exit 11.
That was 11 Way back then, yeah.
So.
That was basically the only one that was there at that time.
When they built this, they rezoned, apparently, I wasn't around at the time, but apparently they rezoned what they needed to, to get the, get the project built. So you can see that the residential district is, you know, all of the front land along Continental Boulevard and then all of the land along Industrial Drive. And I'm not sure how intentional that was, but I, I, I think that, you know, there was another large piece of land, which now is the Merrimack Premium Outlets, which was also zoned residential. They came back and rezoned that property. So this was really a strip of what I would, I would characterize as remnant residential zoning, at least the area along Industrial. I would submit to you, I, I think it's safe to say that it would be highly unlikely if that was ever developed in a residential use. So, so that kind of puts us where we are today. You've got this 1 million square foot, 1 million-plus square foot office R and D campus that has frontage that is wholly within the residential district and their access is, even though it's on the same lot as one of the buildings, is all within the residential district. So we have a split-zone situation. So what, what Fidelity would like to do is a sign that, as I, as I mentioned in the discussion of the, of the hardship, it's related to a rebranding of, of, of Fidelity's campuses nationwide. They want very much to create a branding expression at the main entrance to the campus. They want to create a sense of arrival. They want to create a memorable impression. And as importantly, they want to create brand consistency between their, their various properties.
So, they're sticking that right on the corner of Continental and Industrial, right?
No, no, it's at Spartan, and it's at, it's where the flagpole is today.
Okay.
So those views are of the Spartan Way entrance. The top one is a view across Spartan Way, and the bottom one is a view kind of catty-corner across the intersection. But it's where the, where the flagpole is today.
So across the street is the entrance?
Entrance to the premium outlets.
Is the entrance to the premium outlets, okay.
Correct, correct.
So what about the other entrances? Are there going to be any signage?
Not at this time, no. So basically, the, what they're proposing to do is a kind of sculptural element that will have a sign applied to it. The sculptural element is roughly the same scale as the, as the stone wall that's there today. It's a little bit higher, but it's about the same extent on the site and roughly the same setback from the right-of-way and so forth. And there are lights that exist out there today to light the, to light the flag. This is a computer model of what they're proposing. As it stand, not all of the details have been worked out, but as it stands right now, this will be a 50-plus-foot-long sculptural element that kind of curves around.
Gorgeous.
Then there's a, a relatively small sign of 70 square feet maximum that's proposed to be applied to that. Again, as it stands right now, we're looking at a Corten Steel material for this, for this element with, you might have seen the, some of their commercials, and they talk about the green line, and the green line is incorporated by means of a vegetated strip that goes up and over this, this element. So, and then these are some pictures of a mock-up that they constructed in Westlake, Texas, both a day shot and a night shot. The night lighting is going to be low level. It's going to be sort of sunk into the ground. It'll be LED fixtures, so very energy efficient.
24/7?
Well, we haven't really talked about that. I'm not sure that it's necessary to have it lit 24/7. I mean, I think it would be lit when the, when the facility is open.
Okay.
And they are kind of a, they are kind of a 24/7 operation.
I was going to say, are they open 24/7?
Ginny? Sorry.
All right, were you sworn in, Ginny?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I didn't stand up.
So we're going to tell the truth, all truth, don't put a truth out, we got?
I do.
All right.
Yes, we do have some operations, oh, sorry. We do have some operations that are 24/7. We do operate a 70,000 square foot data center there, so we do have employees that are there 24/7.
Is this a normal sign? Maybe that's the wrong, I'm using the wrong terminology.
Is this the same sign that's going to be used at all facilities?
Yes.
You have, I think you have now.
They're consistent.
There is no sign now.
No, I know what you mean, but like, like Texas where your other companies are, is there a similar sign like this on that property?
It's in process. So the prototype is in Texas today. So the, the idea is for all of our campus to be consistent so that no matter where our clients or associates travel to, you will have that consistent element.
Thank you.
That is a gorgeous sign. I just wish you'd put some flowers on the top to break up the greenery.
Well, you will, you will have the grass.
And that is actually the conclusion of our presentation.
Very, very nice.
So, any, any questions? We'd be happy to answer them.
So, okay, so the only, I mean, so it's, right across the street is, is going to be the outlets.
Yes.
And we already know in that big open field, the outlets is going to be, I think it's going to be, what, a hotel?
Hotel.
Shopping center.
Yeah, there's a Tom Monahan.
So there's no light that's going to be going over that field or anything, because that's, that's all, it's going to get blocked anyway, so. It's just from the people.
No, the, 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 this is a very low level of illumination. I mean, it's a little, it's perhaps a little misleading in that night shot just because of exposures. You can make it as bright as you want to, basically.
As opposed to a lighted sign. It's more of a glow.
Well, it's also externally illuminated. It's not internally illuminated. So.
Okay.
It, it, it's, it's lights shining on a wall, essentially, rather than internally illuminated letters like are over at Merrimack Premium Outlets.
It's more or less shooting towards, the lights are shooting towards the sign and.
Correct.
Giving it a glow as, as opposed to shining a flashlight in somebody's eyes.
Correct. This is not going to be a, a white dot in the landscape. It'll, you know, it's.
You mean, they won't be able to see it from the satellite.
No, no, they won't.
Any further questions from the board? Okay. Then I'll open the, I'll open the public meeting, and is there anyone here who would like to testify for or against the variance for the sign?
London?
Hi.
All right.
I'm Mary Demers.
Actually.
Yeah, could you?
Just need you to have a seat, sign in.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Yeah, you can sit right there.
Yep. And then just state your name for the record, too.
Okay, hi.
Hi.
My name is Mary Demers, and I'm in your backyard.
Yeah.
Um, I'm so glad I came to the meeting because I got the letter and.
Actually, can, can you, can you just?
I'm so glad I came to the meeting.
You don't have to say that.
We've got the letter, and I was thinking 70 feet of illuminated.
Yeah.
You know, all night long in, we can see the snowplows, the lights from the snowplows in the winter when they plow. That's how close we are with your, but your property, so. I was really upset. And I'm, I'm, I'm relieved now that it's not going to be 70 feet high and neon and really tacky.
You feel better now?
I do feel better. I just had to get this off my chest.
Oh, sure. That's what we're here for.
So, okay.
So you're speaking for it?
I'm, I'm okay with it.
Okay.
I'm okay with it. I'm, I was just afraid of, we did that, the malls.
The premium outlets?
The outlets would do all these neon signs, and it would look like Las Vegas. That I don't want.
So it's a little more tasteful, a little more.
It's a little more tasteful. It's lower. It's not 70 feet of this, you know, like a Vegas sign going around.
Of LED lights or whatever.
Yeah, yeah, that's what, you know, it just leaves it to your imagination.
All right.
Okay?
Okay, thank you very much.
So now, so you know now what they have proposed?
Yes, I'm glad I came. I've never been to one of these. I've been to other meetings opposed to, with the.
The mall.
Not just the mall, but the pipeline in the backyard, so.
So we're not that bad, are we?
No, no.
We're pussycats.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else who'd like to testify for or against? Close the public hearing. And again, any remarks, suggestions, comments, questions? Do I hear a motion?
Motion approved. Ginny Lutz.
Lutz. Lutz. Petitioner at FMR Merrimack Realty Trust FID owner variance section, variance under section 17.093 to allow an illuminated sign of up to 70 square feet in a residential zone whereas only nine, only non-illuminated signs up to six square feet in a residential zone are allowed. The parcel is located at One Spartan Way in the R1 Residential, I2 Industrial and Aquafire Conservation Districts at, and Wellhead Protection Area, Tax Map 3C Lot 191, Case Number 2016-017. No staff recommendations.
And could I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Four, zero, zero.
One.
Well, he, he, yeah, he's a, he refused himself.
Why the six square feet isn't more appropriate?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's going to be a beautiful sign. And here he comes already. You were listening in, weren't you, huh?
I was on TV.
Ah. So does that meet with your approval?
I am not at liberty to say.
And do you know when you'll be starting on that?
Uh, we're going to start the permits as soon as we can, understanding that we'll be in 30 days.
30 days, right.
The thought is to have it really grounded in. Welcome.
Good, very good.
Look forward to seeing it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Have to take another ride down there. Have to take another ride down there. Thank you very much. All right. And number nine is discussion for possible action regarding other items of concern. And Jillian, do you have anything?
I do. I have follow-up. At the last meeting, the board had questions on the gate that's placed at the end of Worcester Ave. And I spoke to the chief, the fire chief, and he tells us that from what he understands, the road was not built to current road standards, and to minimize maintenance, the Public Works Department wanted to dead-end the road to limit traffic on that section to minimize maintenance costs. But for emergency access, if ever needed, a gate was placed at that intersection. So that's the answer to the question from the last meeting. Why the gate is there.
Why he couldn't enter his property because they had placed the gate there.
Okay.
All right, anything else?
That's all I have.
Okay. Anything from the board members?
Any applications?
Nothing that I've heard of yet.
Do we, what do we have open for positions?
I believe it's just one alternate, isn't it?
One alternate, isn't it?
Maybe two.
Oh, well.
Okay, approval of minutes.
Madam Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Board Member.
I would like to make a motion to accept the minutes as written for discussion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion on the minutes?
Yeah, I think they're great.
Zena does not stand a job.
Well, then, if you think they're, they're perfect, could I hear a motion then?
I just, that was the motion.
No, I'm sorry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone against? Anyone abstain? Oh, five zero zero. And the, could I hear the last motion of the evening, please?
I make a motion to adjourn, Madam Chairman.
Second on motion.
Anyone for a third?
Third.
Meeting adjourned.
Oh, question. Why is our, oh, too late, we used to-
Too late, we adjourned.
I don't care. Why is that, why is our clock now?